Good afternoon. Welcome to the Salina Planning Commission meeting, August 20th, 2024. Daisy, could you please confirm that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes, I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice was provided.
All right, could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Seidel. Covert. Commissioner Farber.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Padgett.
Here.
Commissioner Alt.
Here.
Chair Mike Sell. Vice Chair Waters.
Here.
Okay, so we are an eight-member board. We have five members present. That constitutes a quorum for taking action on today's agenda. So we do have, we have provided notice of today's meeting and have a quorum to proceed with considering today's agenda.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the August 6th, 2024 meeting? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Ms. Vice Chair, I move approval of the minutes from the August 6th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
It has been moved to second to approve the meeting minutes from August 6th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Name's fine. Okay, as we move into new business, there is one public hearing item and one administrative item. If I may ask staff, if the second item we feel is a short timeframe, could we move it ahead of the first item?
That would be at the chair's discretion. If you want to reverse the order of agenda and have Agenda Item 3.2 considered first, that can be done at your discretion if the rest of the commission's in agreement with that.
Okay, could I get some feedback from the commission on that?
I think that's fine.
That makes sense to me. Do you agree, Dean, that that'll be a much shorter item than the first one?
I think there'll be less public discussion, although we still have a few items to go over.
Okay.
But if the...
Okay.
If they're in agreement, then 3.2 can be moved.
Okay, so let's move to administrative item 3.2, application P-24-2A.
This is coming back to you as a final plat in follow-up to a preliminary plat that was presented to this board on July 2nd, 2024. And just to familiarize everybody with the location and the project and let Dustin get caught up with his graphics, because we changed order on him. The property we're talking about is an 80-acre tract. It's at the southwest corner of Waterwell Road and Centennial Road. It's essentially across Waterwell Road from Salina, Vortex, and the Airport Industrial Center development. And the Airport Authority owns this property. They have a prospect that's interested in a 20-acre site in the far northwest corner of the property. And in order to obtain a building permit for this development project, Airport Authority needs to have a platted lot for them to build on that's annexed, has public street access, public utilities, and services. The Airport Authority and their designers are a little less sure about the remainder of the property, but they're proposing to divide this into four large building lots. And the only known user is in the northwest corner. And so we've reported to you on page two and three that you approved a preliminary plat. And as part of that preliminary plat, you approved a variation to the subdivision regulations to allow this segment of Swanson Road to exceed 600 feet. It's 900 feet measured here. And so that was approved as part of the preliminary plat. And there were a number of conditions there. And we just wanted to report back that in terms of the status of Waterwell Road, the City Commission did approve a development agreement with the Airport Authority. And that allowed for development of this subdivision to proceed while deferring any required improvements to Waterwell Road to a future date. And the design engineers for Airport Authority have submitted preliminary infrastructure plans, and city staff is reviewing those. But there's a number of things in terms of materials quantities, line sizes, that need to be still finalized and confirmed. The condition number six was that obtaining a letter from Wayne Nelson, civil engineer with the city, approving the drainage study calculations and confirming that the drainage plans for the storm drainage system conform with the city's stormwater management design criteria. And then providing of closure calculations and section corner reports, which we have received. I will circle back on condition number six because we don't have that from Mr. Nelson, the civil engineer. And I'll explain that when we talk about drainage. But the plan has now come back for four lots. The property would be bisected by two internal public streets, Scanlon running north-south and Swanson Drive running east-west. Those will provide the internal lot access. And the area you see shaded in red there, that's what they plan to build in Phase One. And so construction of the east leg of Swanson and Centennial Road would be deferred to a later phase. And this property has half-mile frontage on Waterwell and a quarter-mile frontage on Centennial. And as you're aware, Centennial is an unimproved dirt road, but it will be improved to city street standards at the time that it is constructed. And so as we noted, you reviewed the request to extend Scanlon Avenue, and that is to provide access to the southwest corner of the property. And Scanlon and Swanson will be designed as city streets. They'll have curb and gutter and sidewalks, and they will be built in Phase One. In Phase One, the development, Lot 1, Block 1, will have frontage on Scanlon, will have frontage on Swanson, and it'll have frontage on Waterwell Road. As far as street names, Scanlon Avenue is a continuation of the street to the north of Waterwell Road. There's currently not a Swanson Drive anywhere in Salina or Sling County, so that name does not conflict. We're talking about right now 20-acre to 18-acre and a 14-acre lot. These are being designed in a way that should the need arise or request arise, they could be further subdivided to create smaller lots. And so we have put in your packet an aerial photo that shows the backbone of the utility system. And there's a 16-inch water line in Waterwell Road already that reduces down to 12 inches. There's also a 12-inch line in Scanlon and a 12-inch line in Centennial Road. And so they plan to tie this subdivision in with that. And they plan to run a sewer through the subdivision from west to east, run it up Centennial Road, and tie into an existing manhole that's north of Waterwell Road near the intersection of Vortex Drive. And so the Airport Authority will be responsible for the design and construction of the internal water and sewer lines. They've requested and received approval from the City Commission to use special assessments for that. And so they're working on the designs for those public improvements. As to stormwater, the stormwater management regulations require the developer to design a stormwater drainage system to detain the additional runoff caused by development of the site. That means to detain the difference between the existing runoff today and the runoff in the developed conditions. And so in some way, in some fashion, the runoff from this site needs to get over to the east, over to the Dry Creek Channel. And so the drainage study that we provided some excerpts from, they show that water will be stored in the detention ponds and then discharged in the first phase into ditches, the ditches on the south side of Waterwell Road. Long-term, it may be more advantageous to discharge the permanent detention pond straight east to west, Dry Creek. And as we understand it, the Airport Authority is working on acquiring an easement across the Bradley property that Dustin is showing there. That would be the direct route to get runoff over to Dry Creek. So we've indicated that a memo from the city engineer was forthcoming or would be attached to the report. But if you could go back to the plat a second, Dustin, there's still a little bit of... Do you think you could go to the...
Final plat drawing?
Okay, so there's still a little bit of confusion on staff's part that's going to need some explanation from the Airport Authority's engineers. And so these are just the main points that we have from Mr. Nelson so far. But his first point or concern was that the engineers did not use the city-approved method for analyzing the runoff. They did not do it using the rational method, which is what our stormwater criteria require. They did not use the correct rainfall tables in calculating projected rainfall. And then the other thing that we're lacking that we most commonly get at this stage and have discussed with other developments, more commonly residential developments. But one of the things that we do in looking at the final plat and bringing that to you is that we provide assurances that the pond design that's been designed will fit inside of these easements. And we're not able to do that because we don't have any preliminary pond designs. And so I will just try to explain what that means. Those easements get, they get finalized, the plat gets recorded. When the plat's recorded in the Register of Deeds office, those things can't move. And so if we do all this and we dedicate these easements, and then it turns out the pond design won't fit within the easement, then we're going to be coming right back to the Planning Commission to amend the plat and amend the easements. And so that's one item. The other part that's a point of confusion is that Mr. Nelson's had numerous conversations with the designers about eliminating... Okay, so maybe it's, you're moving stuff around on me, Dustin. So could you show me the northeast corner? So this is the development prospect that is developing this property here. They have submitted a preliminary design to the city where they will detain all their post-development runoff in a pond located here. If you could just zoom out slightly, Dustin. So this design is based on having this swale that carries runoff from here around here, over to here, up this easement here, and over to this pond that will be temporary and replaced at some point in time. And so Mr. Nelson was told that with this pond being located here and addressing this runoff, then this pond is no longer necessary because the water that would be going to it will be detained here. So we need an explanation of why this is here when this is here. And the other part that has been confusing staff is that this pond right here has alternated between being labeled as permanent and being labeled as temporary. Right now, it's labeled as temporary. Temporary means that someday it would go away and be replaced by something else as development or a parking lot or something else because it's no longer needed. But the drainage study indicates that that is permanent. And so we don't want a plat being recorded that shows an easement that's temporary because that means it may have something that goes away in the future. So we need some clarification of whether this is substituting for and replacing this, what function this serves, and why this pond, which is labeled as permanent everywhere else, is labeled as temporary. And so we've indicated that the Airport Authority would be responsible for constructing Scanlon, Swanson, and Centennial to full city standards. The timing on Centennial will depend on how they do their phasing. They will be responsible for construction of public sidewalks on the internal streets. They'll be responsible for constructing the detention ponds and the improvements needed to carry runoff from those ponds. And then they'll be responsible for designing and constructing the internal water lines and public sewer lines. As it stands now, the City of Salina would not be responsible for any of these public improvements. So on page nine and 10, we've kind of summarized what those improvements are that are happening in Phase One and Phase Two. As we noted, the Airport Authority has been approved to utilize special assessment financing. And they can use that financing to finance construction of streets, water, sewer lines, and the detention ponds because the ponds would be considered semi-public if they're in a public easement. And so we've already addressed the question of Swanson Drive. So if the Planning Commission concurs with the finding that this plat is consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved and all policy and technical issues have been addressed to your satisfaction, and you wish to approve this final plat application, we're recommending that the approval be made to the following conditions. And we've outlined six conditions on page 11 of the report. And I would call attention to Condition Four, which does require the submittal of an updated drainage study. We've used the word "final detention pond design," but we need some clarification if any of these... We know that the pond on Lot 1, Block 1 is permanent, but we need some clarification on the others. And those need to be built and in place before there's a certificate of occupancy issued for any building within the subdivision. But with that, I would be open to any questions that you have. But our main, there's always concern about life safety things and access and fire protection, but taking care of flood concerns and taking care of runoff is important. And we have found the concept for dealing with stormwater to be confusing at best.
Okay, does the commission have any questions for staff?
Dean, can you review number six where you talked about the city engineer? Has that, what's the deal with the city engineer and when's he supposed to respond or where are we at with that? You kind of talked about it.
You're talking about the condition number six?
Yes.
The condition number six on the preliminary plat?
Yes.
We do not have a letter from the city engineer approving the final storm drainage design plan and runoff calculations for this subdivision. And we're hoping to get some knowledge and clarification from the design engineers for the Airport Authority about that. We can possibly send someone up and see if we can get Mr. Nelson down here to elaborate on any of these things. He's put some of his thoughts into writing, but he's shared those with me. But he does not have a memo approving their drainage study or plan for the reasons that I outlined. We don't think that there's... The thing about this property is that the lots are so large and there's so much acreage that there's plenty of space to provide the needed detention. It's just that we don't have the level of detail that would make the city engineer comfortable in providing that letter.
Okay, are there any other questions from the commission for staff?
Dean, if we approved it with the six conditions, would they have to come back for us to review any other plat or what their final plat would be?
Well, no, this would be the final plat. That's why we want to try to get these drainage issues ironed out at this meeting because we don't want to have to come back. And so the goal is to make sure that every easement that's shown on the plat, especially the drainage ones, that we understand the purpose and their current. So if you could go back to the layout again, Dustin. This, these easement here and all this elaborate network of easements is all designed to get water from here around, over, up into this pond. If there's a pond right here that's getting all the parking lot and building runoff here, we don't understand if this is even necessary or if this is even necessary if we have this here. And the confusing part is that Mr. Nelson, the civil engineer, has had conversations with designers for Wilson and Company saying that this was going to be eliminated. And then we get an updated drawing that shows it's still there. And we're doing the best we can as a staff, but we simply don't know which, what is the correct plan to present to you.
And I believe that drawing is updated from what we have in our packets as well.
It is updated from what you have in your packets. Because this is not in your...
Correct.
...packet, and I asked for that to be added. But we thought this was going to be added and this was going to be eliminated. And then the most confusing thing that needs to be clarified is, I don't know if you can go back to the phasing plan, Dustin, but it's our understanding from reading the drainage study that this is the regional detention pond that's going to serve this whole development. Well, if that's the case, it's not temporary, it's permanent, and it should not be labeled as temporary on the plat. And we want to make sure that the Planning Commission understands whether it is, in fact, temporary or not, so we can convey the correct information.
Okay.
And like I said, we're doing the best we can to interpret this, but we need to hear from the engineers themselves how this is supposed to work.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Could we have the applicant come to the podium and state your name and address and then address the questions that have been proposed?
Sure. Good afternoon. I'm Peter Miller. I'm the executive director of the Salina Airport Authority. And my address is 3229 Arnold Avenue. This is my work address. But I can do, I can give you kind of a quick cover of, kind of a rundown of the drainage that we're talking about there. I'll have to refer to the specific questions about how the calculations and everything were put together, all the different things. I'll have to refer that to our engineer that did that. But I can explain, if you zoom out just a little bit and kind of show the entire 80 acres. So because of the speed at which we're trying to get this platted and put together in order to, you know, in order to satisfy the potential tenant we have up in the northwest corner or will have in the northwest corner, we designed this plat basically in two different ways. And this drawing kind of shows both ways. The northeast corner that says temporary detention pond, right up there, that was originally put in there with the idea that we could not get the drainage easement across the Bradley, the Bradley property to the east. The permanent drainage, if we could get the easement across the Bradley property, would be in the southeast corner. It says temporary detention pond right there. I'll let our engineer kind of explain why it's called that. Kind of the short answer is, though, if we're able to get the easement across the Bradley property, which I fully believe that I think we should be able to do, there will be no temporary detention pond in the southeast corner. It will only be the southwest corner. We'll call it permanent drainage. The northwest corner that's being developed by the potential client, they have their own drainage up there because they wanted to control their own drainage. So we just incorporated that into the plat as well, and it feeds into, or will feed into the storm system that we're actually putting in. So I can let Tyler speak to the different easements and that. But that's basically what it kind of comes down to. We're showing Phase One and Phase Two on the same plat.
Okay. Tyler Glishman, Wilson and Company, 1700 East Iron Avenue. I will give you a high level with some in-the-weeds information. Essentially, the flow coming off Block 1, Lot 1, goes into that detention pond they have. It allows us to reduce the size of the storm sewer system that it's going to go into that we're building in Phase One. Then with that, what we've done is we've carried two designs through the whole time, one with the permanent design, one for the temporary design, depending on whether we get the easement in time for construction of Phase One. The design was orchestrated and the phasing was all set up for getting Block 1, Lot 1, ready for that building easement, for that building permit. So we have a storm sewer network that will build under the road. That's mainly around Scanlon Avenue. That detention pond for Block 1 is actually very nice. It allows us to capture that runoff and efficiently put it into the system. So it's a better, nice, efficient system, controls erosion. We'll take it down the street right away. That's not going to be built at this time. And we will either drop it into the permanent detention pond if we have the easement going across the Bradley property, or we'll route it up and build an interim detention pond in that quadrant. Then that releases into the county ditch and goes where the water is currently going. Currently, the only property that's going to be built on is Lot 1, Block 1, and that currently is routed into that ditch anyway. That's kind of where that water flows. The rest of the system flows off the south side of the property. The existing, I should say, the system does not. But the existing drainage, you can see those legs that all flow south across that property. What we're doing with that is we're going to intercept that, and that's why we have that easement along the south side, so that we can put an open ditch in that easement and run it down to the permanent detention pond. And currently, you'll notice, if you go back to the drawing, please... I really want to walk up and put my hands on the screen. Carla knows I love doing that. So you'll notice in there, there's, and I got to do it, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry. So what's your... So what you're seeing is you're seeing two easements, so the one, one for the interim condition, if we can't obtain the Bradley property easement, and the other one is for the permanent. So we have them both laid in there. As Peter had mentioned, the intent is, is the rest of the lots are going to be replatted for their size. And so, lot two, block one is set up such that it could be developed because it's got all the infrastructure in place, it's got the streets in place. But when you go to the other lots, they have to be replatted before they can be developed. And that's the intent, is that's phase two. So when phase two occurs, that's when the, the remaining portion of Swanson Drive will be built and then that's when Centennial Road gets built and then all the permanent's done. So all this drainage easements will be cleared up in phase two with a replat. Did I go deep enough?
Yeah. Are there any questions of Mr. Glishman?
I mean, that makes sense to me, but is that going to cause plating issues?
I guess that answers Mr. Rogers' question. Our goal is not to have this come back to you, apparently their goal is to have it come back to you, so.
That would be, I guess, phase two plating is when it would come back.
Yeah, except for this plat that's recorded is going to be for the full 80 acres. So the, there will be a plat for the full 80 acres and the way that those easements are dedicated. I guess the, the point we're trying to make is that if you call something temporary, then the designer, the engineer has to put a note on the plat that says, "This is temporary because when this event happens, the, there's no longer a need for it and it will go away." And we just can't believe that the pond that's in the southeast corner that's intended to be permanent is temporary, because it's not going to go away. And it should not be labeled as temporary, which is what the city engineer's memo says. So that, that's the part that is, is confusing to how something that's not, there's not going to be an event in the future that will make that easement in the southeast corner get vacated and turn into something else. And so, we're still puzzled by, the term temporary means it's there until this happens. And we can't think of a this happening that would make that go away.
Yes, go ahead.
We're not quite sure why we were supposed to change that. It should be permanent down in that lot. So that, I can't read, that's lot one? Block two, lot one, is that what that is? My eyes are getting bad.
Lot four?
I can't.
Talking about southeast corner?
Oh, lot three. So that one should be permanent, is the intent, that that would be the permanent drainage And then that way, the one in the northeast quadrant would be temporary and would go away with a replat.
And we just, we just want to note and further explain that we've had a number of temporary drainage easements over the years that have been dedicated on plats. And the way to address that is to label it as temporary on the plat, have a note on the plat that says, "If this event happens, this temporary drainage easement will be released." And that release gets recorded in the registered deeds office and there is no reason to replat or bring it back to the planning commission because the event has happened, which justifies the release of the easement and the easement's released, but it doesn't result in a replat and it doesn't result in having to bring it back to the planning commission. And so that, that's, I think, what we're trying to emphasize. We can structure this in a way that something's temporary, there's a note on the plat that says it's temporary until this happens, when that happens, it will be released and then it doesn't have to come back before you.
Any other questions for Mr. Glishman?
Are you guys opposed to postponing this until all these, there seems to be a lot of dangling things that aren't quite finalized, but for, for staff to have everything finalized. So are you guys opposed to postponing it until a further date?
So, just, just for my reference, when would that, I mean, I know we can get this resolved pretty quickly.
Okay.
But when would the next, basically how far back?
The next, the next planning commission meeting is September 3rd. We're not trying to get this postponed, we're trying to get it acted on. And so that's why we're taking a great effort to try to clarify these things for the commission and that's why we have, we have condition number four, which says, "A revised, updated drainage study for the subdivision and a final detention pond design must be submitted to the city engineer for review and approval in conjunction with an application for a building permit for any building site within this subdivision. Required drainage improvements must be completed prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building site within the subdivision." So what condition four is trying to do is it's trying to allow them to refine their plans and tie it to the issuance of any, any building permit in this subdivision. But I think you, you don't have time to read it clearly, but the, the memo from Mr. Nelson and Mr. Nelson's here to answer any questions you have about it is it's not, it's not a question of whether there's enough stormwater capacity because they've, they've designed their pond capacity for a hundred-year event, which exceeds the minimum detention requirements for the city. But he has just pointed out that our approved methodology was not followed, the rainfall tables used don't conform with the ones that we use for other subdivisions and we don't have a final pond design, so we can't tell you that the pond design will fit inside the easement. And he's also noted that the term temporary should be removed. And then, it's his understanding that the northeast pond should be removed, but there, you're indicating that that's not the case. But if we have Mr. Nelson here, I think he can answer any questions you have about drainage that could potentially allow this to move forward without a need for a postponement.
Well, if, if we approve this with the six conditions, isn't that going to meet the requirements that you're asking for?
It will be if we can work in the interim between now and when the prospect for lot one, block one submits their building plans and we can coordinate the two. The main, our main concern is that there is a meeting of the minds, everybody understands that the pond in the southeast corner is not temporary. And I don't, we have a drawing, this drawing was submitted to us, it was reviewed by staff, it was reviewed by Mr. Nelson. It labels the pond in the southeast corner as temporary. We don't believe it's temporary and intended to be temporary. And if we can get that resolved today, that goes a long way towards clarifying what the intent is.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have full confidence that we're able to sort this out before a building permit for a potential tenant is, is presented, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Nelson, do you have any comments you would like to offer in addition to what's already been offered?
Thank you, Ms. Waters, I'm Wayne Nelson, staff engineer with the City of Salina. I missed most of the first part of what's going on here, busy writing away here, but certainly you have a copy of my memorandum. I think there's, my, my experience throughout this project is that I'm hearing different ideas and different design concepts from various components within the Wilson and Company staff who have provided me information, from, from the drainage report itself to the designers, to Mr. Glishman and others. So if you have any questions related to my report here, I'd be glad to stand for them.
Mr. Nelson, you believe you can work with the team though to get these challenges resolved, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Nelson?
It's not a question of whether we have the space or capacity to handle the anticipated runoff, it's just a matter of clarification.
Right, I mean, it's, need a design with the dimensions and elevations so that I can literally draw it out and fit it within the proposed easements.
Okay. All right, any other questions of Mr. Nelson? Okay, thank you. All right, does the commission have any other questions for staff or the applicant? If not, I would entertain comment or a motion.
Well, I would move that we approve application P24-2A with the six items outlined as conditions for approval.
On page 11.
On page 11 by the staff.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve application P24-2A with the six conditions on page 11. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
So what happens is that the, the final dedications and the actual wording of those easements will be finalized between this meeting and September the 9th, when this goes before the planning, or the city commission for acceptance of dedication. So with your direction, we will work with the designers to clarify these and pull Mr. Nelson in to get the exact terminology and the exact dimensions we need for these easements so that when the city commission accepts them, they know exactly what they're accepting in the way of easements. So we appreciate your time and attention with that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll move into public hearing item, application CU22-8A.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is designated with, as application 22-8A because it's an amendment of application 22-8, which was considered by the planning commission in August of 2022. And the request at that time was to add an outdoor patio or serving area at a drinking establishment located in downtown Salina that would have food and beverage service. So you have in your packets, you have a, first of all, an application, second of all, that is followed by a letter titled as "Request for Authorization to Use Sound Equipment at The Point." And that is, that is the nature of today's request, is to modify the use of the approved outdoor patio area to add amplified sound and amplified sound equipment. And that was not part of the original request that was approved by the planning commission in August of, of 2022. And we, as a staff, have worked with this, we understand that The Point wants the freedom to operate the way that they want to operate, they have, they want to have the freedom to change their business model of the way they operate at that location. But we have certain Kansas alcohol laws and we have certain regulations and we have certain regulations that are specific to the C4 downtown district that staff needs to apply and we need to apply it in an even-handed fashion. So attached to your report is a background report that provides a lot of the history of why we do what we do, why we regulate and how we do that and the role of the planning commission. And attached to that background report is a map. And on that map, it shows you a list and the location of all the downtown drinking establishments. And there's quite a number. And all of them are regulated in some fashion by Kansas Alcohol Beverage Control and by the City of Salina. And our, our job is to treat similar businesses similarly. And so that is what we're doing today. And this is somewhat new for staff and new for the commission because we have not had a downtown establishment that has tried to have amplified sound or dances or live performances on the outdoor portion of their. So in, in 2023, you approved a conditional use permit for The Groove, which is not that far from this location, in a building on South Santa Fe, but the difference being that that's a nightclub and it stays open till 2:00 a.m., but it's all enclosed inside a building. And this is not enclosed inside the building. And I think something that is, is not understood and that, that can be debated as the pros and cons, but the amendment that was approved to allow outdoor serving areas and, and patios has a provision and the city commission didn't want the outdoor portion to be the dominant part of the business, it wanted the indoor portion to be the dominant part of the business with an accessory outdoor use. And in 2022, we had to work with a local architect and worked really hard to define an, an area that's underneath the building canopy that is smaller than the inside portion because the inside portion is not very large. If you compare the indoor portion to a place like the Paramount or The Groove or Big Nose Cates or places like that, the indoor portion of this building is actually really small. And as a result of it being really small, the maximum occupant load is 49 people. And as a result of that limitation and the historical small use of the property, this property has one unisex bathroom. And of course, if you were doing a place like The Groove or Big Nose Cates or a larger restaurant, you would not be allowed to have one unisex bathroom, you'd have to have multiple bathrooms based on your anticipated occupancy. So we did want to point out, and we do have the building official here, that regardless of your vote and your decision on adding the outdoor to amplified sound, we still have one large hurdle to overcome and that's the fact that the building and fire departments have limited the occupancy to 49 people. And that's partially because of fire exits and protection and it's partially because of restrooms. So I'm going to ask Mr. Holman, our building official, to come up to the microphone and just give you a brief overview of the correlation between occupant load and restrooms and, and fire protection and how those interrelate in terms of setting what the occupant load is for a building.
Good afternoon, Sean Holman, building official. And Mr. Andrew has laid this out perfectly. The occupant load that you find on the certificate of occupancy for The Point is at 49, both because that's reasonable for the initial use proposed and because that is also a threshold. To go beyond that would require... To go beyond that would require additional restrooms. And it would also require a slightly different exiting configuration. If you'll, you look at the, what's on display here on the wall, you'll notice that the exit doors swing inward from the indoor dining area rather than outward, which would be in the direction of the path of egress travel in the event of an emergency. So right here, and here, and here. The doors that are letting people out when they need to get out are swung in the incorrect direction if you have fifty or more people in that space. And if there were an occupant load fifty or greater, then those necessarily would have to be changed, at least those that are required exits, would have to be changed so that they would allow people to, just to leave without having to stop, pull the door, and then let everyone out. And so there, there is a, certainly a life safety component to maintaining that forty-nine person occupant load when it's been designated. That's, that's one aspect of that life safety component. And what was mentioned earlier, the, the unisex restroom is actually a provision that we utilize sometimes for existing construction in order to be able to use existing buildings with existing facilities, even though they don't actually meet the requirements of our locally adopted codes. So our locally adopted codes require for all occupancies that are new construction, restrooms for men and restrooms for women separately. This comes from the 2012 Uniform Plumbing Code, and the Table four twenty-two dot one actually has been amended locally in our Salina Municipal Code to be slightly different. But the point is, both male and female restrooms, separate, both accessible, are required in all new construction. Whenever we have a new proposed occupancy in an existing space, such as what we have here with The Point, we do often approve a unisex restroom for an occupant load of forty-nine or fewer, but never more than that. That's actually from the International Plumbing Code, which we have not adopted. But being a recognized standard, we do allow that in order to encourage development and not to stifle business activity in existing buildings, especially downtown. So there is, there's both the fixture count challenge. And, and I have spoken with the business operator about this, and also about the, the life safety concerns with the door swing and other elements, depending upon occupant load and occupancy classification. Because frankly, when the use changes, we have to revisit the occupancy classification again and decide, is this still a B or business type occupancy? Or at what point does this look a lot more like a restaurant or a bar? With different calculations for occupant load, square feet per head, exiting requirements, all. Everything is driven by the use of the space. And so when the use of the space changes, it, it changes what we can approve and what we, what we would require. But in this instance, with the, the, both the indoor and the outdoor space, what we have to bear in mind is that the facilities support only the forty-nine person occupant load for the combined spaces, outside and inside. And so I'm, it, I hope that I've explained a bit. If there are any questions, I would be happy to, to clarify or try to answer those if that's helpful.
Are there any questions for Sean?
I think our main.
Thank you.
Our main point is that, that we're, we're here discussing with you is whether the amplified sound that would support a variety of different events from what was occurring there previously, you were supportive of allowing, but we just wanted to make clear that simply acting on that did not cure all, all the situation about expanding the, the capacity and attendance at a, a place that was not originally designed for that. So there was a vote of, of three to two to approve a conditional use permit to establish an outdoor service area under the building canopy here in August of 2022. And some of the findings that this commission made was that based on the architect's site plan, the outdoor dining area is smaller in size than the occupancy of the inside. That is, that's a difficult thing to ensure. You made a finding that there would be no live musical performances and no outdoor amplified sound, so it won't produce any negative spillover effects on neighbors. And so you put a condition on that if there were any substantial modifications to the floor plan or outdoor features of the establishment, that would require an approval of an amendment of the conditional use permit. And so we feel that we are in the, the realm of having a major modification of the approved floor plan and the outdoor serving area, and so we're bringing this back to you. Also wanted to point out that it's, it's fairly, it's fairly complicated because a lot of these things overlap, but you may be aware that a lot of our establishments downtown have a sidewalk dining component, where they have sidewalk seating or a plaza seating area. And they are allowed to serve alcoholic beverages and food in those areas, but only establishments that are restaurants, or meet the definition of a restaurant, can have a sidewalk dining area or sidewalk cafe. And so to be a restaurant, you have to have a full commercial kitchen, a menu, and all of that. And one of the challenges with this is that staff, at least from, speaking from my own perspective as zoning administrator, I have never believed this to be a restaurant. I have believed it to be a, primarily a bar. It's trying to operate that way. The, one of the requirements to be a restaurant instead of a bar is that you have to have at least thirty percent of your food sales, or your sales in food. It's my experience in working with these situations that the way that many establishments meet that requirement is they have an extensive lunch trade. So people would be surprised if they think of The Paramount Bar, and they think of it as primarily a bar. But at The Paramount Bar, forty-one percent of their sales is in food. And the other is in alcohol. And so they meet the requirement to do that, but they have a very extensive lunch trade. And so that, that allows them to be treated as a restaurant, allows them to have a sidewalk area in front of The Paramount because it meets the definition of restaurant. We collected the receipts on The Point for about six months. And during those six months, they sold ice cream more than they sold alcohol, but their sales were not very great. So they felt like they needed to change their business model. And so following that, at some point in time, they started using their patio space for parties, dances, and other events. And so as their business model shifted from being an ice cream shop with alcohol sales, they brought in portable DJ equipment and speakers as part of their operation. And so since those weren't approved as part of their original conditional use permit, we sent them a letter that was signed by Mr. Hirsch that you have in your packet, notifying them of the concerns about amplified sound, about the city's disturbing the peace ordinance, and about the occupancy levels that were limited there. And so following that letter, we did have an on-premise meeting with the business owner to talk about some of those items that resulted in this application being filed, which is to amend the conditional use permit to allow this to be added as, as an accessory to their business model, which is to have amplified sound and DJ equipment in the outdoor patio area. And so this is very marginal as to whether it's in five hundred feet of a residential area, but there are a number of lofts on North Santa Fe. There's the Gold Key Apartments across the street, the Town Square Apartments. And we did occasionally get comments about the noise emanating from The Point and, and the lateness of the hour. And so we've, we've provided you some background information about why we have the, the requirement for having a conditional use permit for amplified sound because in our experience, it's better for neighbors to be notified upfront about that and be able to respond before it happens, and then not have to have complaints afterwards. And so the role of the commission in this case is to determine whether The Point should be permitted to operate as a drinking establishment with amplified sound within their outdoor seating area. And this really comes down to whether or not the drinking establishment with amplified sound would negatively impact the surrounding area in your view. And so we don't, we don't think it is necessary or helpful to continue to burden the staff and the owners of The Point with filing receipts every month to try to demonstrate something that they're not, which is a restaurant. And so we think that the Planning Commission should simply recognize that they are a drinking establishment, should be classified as such. And then the question is, should a drinking establishment be allowed to have outdoor amplified sound? So as we, we look at the property and how it fits with the C four district, the building and everything, how it's set up complies with our C four district ordinances. The only thing that we have concern about, and I think if you've seen the setup, there is posts and cables that are set up that kind of identify and surround the seating area. And I don't remember, are those in your photo that you took? So, okay. So the method that the architect came up with to define the outdoor area was those, those cables and posts. And it just happens that the area inside of that is smaller than, than the indoor serving area. And that's the means by which we can say that it's accessory to what's inside. If those grew, or it goes outside those boundaries, then we can't, we can't necessarily say that the outdoor operation is smaller than the indoor operation. And so The Point wishes to be allowed to set up DJ equipment with amplifiers along the west side of their outdoor seating area. And that would be generally over in this, this area right here, where those are, are set up. And then, right now, they operate from 3:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on Tuesday, Thursday. And on Friday and Saturday, they're open from 3:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. And so the, the positives would be to provide an additional post-show gathering space for people attending events or other venues downtown. It makes the downtown be a entertainment district. On the negative side, if it's not properly managed or supervised, you could have negative activities associated with overconsumption of alcohol. And over the years, those have included things like noise, littering, vandalism, and, and other things. So as it, it relates to public safety considerations, if you combine dancing and hours of operation with largest occupant loads, those have tended to create the most responses from law enforcement and other agencies. And so some of those other places have much larger occupant loads, but this, this is a much smaller space trying to accommodate an equal number of, of people as say a place like The Groove, which is, which is much larger. And so one of the challenges of utilizing a space like this is it's fairly open with the north and east sides having no walls or sound barrier. And that allows the noise to travel pretty freely in, in those directions. And so we have, At Your Places there, we have comments from Leslie Bishop from Salina Downtown. Her first comment that we received was that there had been some complaints received from residential neighbors about the volume of the sound. And then she followed up with a, a follow-up that said she hasn't, although she'd heard that from residents, she hadn't heard any complaints from area business owners. And she believes that The Point offers something different to the community and that the venue is fun and welcoming. We also have a letter there from Renee Duxler, the Chamber of Commerce, in favor of the application, just asking that it be limited to evening events and programming after 5:00 p.m. What it doesn't say is when they feel the evening cutoff should be. And so except for residents, there's usually no business presence downtown at, at 1:00 a.m. or, or 2:00 a.m. And so one question for the Planning Commission is whether the outdoor speakers are appropriate, and then whether they should be allowed in the particular location where they're proposed outdoors on the, on the west, west portion. And so we've provided you with some information about, about decibel levels. There have been no sound tests or decibel levels taken during any of the events there. But we do have some experiences with the Oakdale Stage and, and noise coming from it. And so in this case, the amplified sound's primarily going to be on weekends. And it is close to the City Light Stage. And the City Light Stage sometimes hosts events with bands and amplified sound. The difference is that if you are using the City Light Stage, you have to have a special event permit, and that permit's going to limit you to having amplified sound until 9:00 p.m. If you go past that, you can go to 10:00 p.m. or possibly 11:00 with the approval of the city manager. But those are done on a case-by-case basis. And usually, those events are taking place with some city staff oversight. And so in this case, the events are primarily on weekends, and they happen until 1:30 or 2:00 a.m. in the morning. And so if you were to approve the amplified sound, it would be important for the Planning Commission to establish parameters that would limit excessive sound in the early morning hours. We don't think there's any impact on public utilities and services, although we did, would note that city staff was contacted about the possibility of putting porta-potties on the parking lot across the street that's owned by the building authority on the east side of Seventh Street. And our response was, well, one, that's not the city's lot. It belongs to the building authority. And two, we don't think that porta-potties are a good permanent solution for an entertainment venue. And so that, that has not been pursued further. And while it's true that there is no requirement that businesses downtown provide their own parking, having a couple hundred people in attendance at an event does have more of an impact on, on traffic and parking than if you're limited to your occupant load of forty-nine. So back in 2001, when this event, or this regulatory process we have with the conditional use permit, and I would just add one thing, that unlike most any other state, in the state of Kansas, local communities, if they have a local drinking establishment that's operating outside the parameters of their. that's operating outside the parameters of their license, the local municipalities have almost no capacity to suspend or lift a drinking establishment license that's reserved to the Kansas ABC. And so, what cities like Salina, Lawrence, and other places did was they made drinking establishments conditional uses, because you can revoke a conditional use even if you can't revoke a liquor license. And so, that is why we set up this process. And so, to help the planning commission evaluate the potential impact, on page 12, we've just provided, this is what the planning commission at the time said, these are the things we want to know to evaluate a drinking establishment. We want to know what the square footage is. And we want to know what the occupant load or limit is. We want to know if it has a full kitchen and a menu. We want to know if it's going to have a dance floor or live music or amplified sound. We want to know if it's going to have an outdoor serving area. We want to know its hours of operation. And we want to know how close it is to churches, daycares, and residential developments. We want to know how close it is to other drinking establishments. And so, we have identified some alternatives for you, both under the drinking establishment question and the outdoor amplified sound question. Our belief is that this is a drinking establishment, like the other drinking establishments downtown. And you could approve a conditional use permit for the point to operate as a drinking establishment, which means no minimum food sales requirement with or without any special conditions. You could postpone consideration of the drinking establishment question to a future meeting if additional information is needed before taking action. Or you could deny the request to be a drinking establishment here. I don't think that's relevant, because they're operating as a drinking establishment already and they have a conditional use permit. And then, we have the recommended conditions for that on page 13, which kind of are consistent with what was done in 2022. And then, the other question is action item number two, which is a question of amplified sound. And so, one option would be to approve the amplified sound with a time limitation of 10:00 PM, from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. The other option is to approve it as requested with a time period of 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM. The other option would be postpone consideration if you feel additional information is needed to reach a decision. Or you could deny the application if you believe the proposed amplified sound would cause injury to other surrounding properties if it was approved in this location. And so, we've recommended one condition, that if the amplified sound is approved, that the point must be responsive to noise complaints. And the city of Salina, including the police department, reserves the right to shut down any events that are deemed to be disturbing the peace. And we pointed out, and the reason for having the building official here was that we wanted to point out that even if the conditional use permit is approved, the point would still need to work with staff to resolve some of the occupant load concerns in regard to the current number of restrooms that they have. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Hirsch to put up some possible findings of fact to see if the commission wants to filter their decision in that regard. And any decision that the commission makes needs to be supported by findings that a majority of commissioners agree with. And so, you might need to zoom that up, one for my eyeglass prescription.
Don't we have that in front of us?
You do.
Okay.
But the applicants don't have it in front of them. And so, we're going to walk through these. And so, the first finding deals with their conformance with the district regulations. And it is a permitted use that's subject to a conditional use permit. Their patio is allowed, and as long as it doesn't exceed the size of the indoor serving area, they can have outdoor amplified sound within 500 feet of a residential district as long as their noise levels do not unreasonably disturb the peace, quiet comfort, or tranquility of neighboring inhabitants. Their building conforms with C4 development standards as long as their occupant limit of 49 people is not exceeded. And the point must be responsive to noise complaints as part of the recommended conditions of approval. So, these are findings that would support approving their request. So, if you agree that the proposed use would enhance the image of downtown as an entertainment place, it offers a post-show gathering space for people attending other events downtown. It would provide a unique destination for people to celebrate events, parties, while having both an indoor and outdoor space. If you agreed with the 10:00 PM limitation, then a finding could be made that that 10:00 PM cutoff is designed to ensure that the point operates in a manner that's compatible with surrounding businesses and is compatible with those other businesses and residences. In terms of the impact, the combined area is 2,357 square feet. And that's less than The Groove, which is nearby. So, the overall size is comparable to other establishments. Businesses are not required to provide off-street parking for their own business. And there's ample parking as long as they don't exceed their 49-occupant limit. And there's no issues with utilities or drainage. And we had discussed early on in 2022 the fact that there's curb cuts that people have historically used to pull under the canopy. And we wanted to work with them to come up with suitable safety barriers at those driveway approaches so that people don't inadvertently pull into the driveway approaches and drive into the outdoor area. So, those are all findings that would support approval of the request, assuming a 10:00 PM cutoff. And so, reasons that might support denial are the fact that they're proposing to operate until 2:00 AM, which exceeds the 10:00 PM cutoff in the downtown area and the community generally for outdoor sound. They are proposing to operate in a way where they do not have adequate restroom facilities. And should the occupancy ever exceed 49 people, which is likely if they're hosting a dance party, they would not have sufficient restroom facilities and would cause patrons to seek alternate ways to relieve themselves in the downtown area. You could find that going past 10:00 PM could disturb the peace and quiet of the neighborhood and affect the ability of loft and apartment residences to sleep and find that no other bars downtown have outdoor amplified sound. And so, one of staff's main concerns in terms of finding is we're not sure how to ensure that the outdoor patio operation is smaller in size than the indoor serving area. That is just a challenge. And so, I think the assumption has to be that the business model they desire to operate does not work if their occupancy is limited to 49 people. And they don't believe that their business model works if they can't have amplified sound until 2:00 AM. And so, I think that's kind of the crux of where we're at. So, it's important, it's very important, that the planning commission in making decisions have made in their minds and we've tried to commit to writing findings that would support their decision. And so, that's why we wanted to go through those so everybody had a chance to see those. And with that, I will pause to take any questions. Again, we think that the decision that this should be approved as a drinking establishment through a conditional use permit is not even debatable. And then, the question is, should they be allowed to add outdoor amplified sound? And if so, what is the appropriate time cutoff date for having outdoor amplified sound in downtown Salina? So, any of the staff who's worked on this would be open for any questions. Building official's still hanging around, so ask him any question you want.
Thank you, Dean. Does the commission have any questions for any of the city staff?
I have a question. In relation to the findings where it says the size of the outdoor patio does not exceed the size of the indoor serving area, are we talking about physical square footage? Or are we talking about occupancy at that time?
We're talking about physical square footage. We have kind of a table there that we put in your packet where we have done that. And the architect, Mr. Edgar, was very careful to come up with a plan that we're not talking about seating or tables necessarily. We're talking purely as square footage. That if you have an establishment and that establishment's in a building that's 3,000 square feet, then if they're building a, we had a recent example, and somebody will have to help me with the square footage and help me do my math. But the recent discussion of a proposal to put a Jose Peppers establishment in where the Brickley Pear was, that building is 25 feet wide and 120 feet deep, roughly 3,000 square feet. Their indoor dining area is about 2,000 square feet. And they proposed adding an outdoor patio. And the outdoor patio is a little over 600 square feet. So, the indoor area is 2,000, the outdoor area is 600. It's got walls and barriers around it. And it's physically fixed, so it's not going to get any bigger than 600 square feet. And it's clearly smaller than the indoor dining area. Here, it's just more difficult, because we're using the stanchions and the posts to define the outdoor serving area. And so, that was done, because the total area under the balcony is larger than the indoor space. And so, it's just difficult in a situation like this to ensure that the outdoor patio is smaller than the indoor space. We're simply pointing that out by square footage.
I wasn't on the commission at the time, but why can't more permanent barriers be put up?
Well, they could be, but they are taken up and put down. And so, most of the sidewalk cafes downtown have railings that are affixed to the sidewalk. And they're there year-round, even if they're not used in the winter months. The fences are anchored to the sidewalk. In this case, they chose because they have been taken in. And when they're closed, generally, they take the stanchions in and they take the seats in. And so, they bring those out and take them back in. They're not out, they're 24/7.
One question. Building inspector, I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry. But you mentioned the exit doors and the configuration with those. I don't see in here any condition that those would need to be changed. But is that part of the deal?
Sean Holman, building official, yeah. And the, yes, it depends, it's driven by occupant load and also by occupancy. And so, for a bar, for example, which would be an A2 occupancy, for an occupant load of 50 or greater, not only would the door swing need to change, but there would be panic hardware required on those doors as well. The crash bars you may be familiar with. If you're in a restaurant that's pretty new, you can always get out just by pushing the bar in the direction you're moving, and it lets you out. And those are the sorts of requirements that come in with going over the 49-person occupant load.
But I didn't see that in any of the...
We don't have that as any conditions, because the approach that we're taking is that we're relying on the planning commission to approve the activity level that you want to allow here. And then, depending on what you approve, that will allow us to get back with the operators and do the physical things indoors to accommodate their business model. But those aren't really planning commission items. Your item is to look at the addition of amplified sound and how the patio is used, and give us your feedback on that.
I have one more question. The 5:00 PM start time, where does that come from?
That 5:00 PM start time came from the president of the Chamber of Commerce. It's in the letter that they sent over that they were supportive of the point adding amplified sound as long as it did not start before 5:00 PM.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, would the applicant like to come to the podium and state your name and address and provide comments?
Hello, Diego Carrizales, the point owner located on 157 North Seventh Street, Salina. I would like to call somebody to translate for me. It's going to be easy for everybody. En primer lugar, me gustaría decir que the point no cambió su modelo de negocio.
Okay, in first place, the point never changed the way they operate, the model.
Que hemos implementado nuevas estrategias de venta es diferente a cambiar el modelo de negocio.
They have implemented new strategies for sale, but they didn't change the, you know, the business.
Me llama la atención como el staff de la ciudad. Solo se hace referencia a las fiestas temáticas que duran hasta las 12 de la mañana.
Okay, he's just surprised about how the city is just calling attention to the parties that last until 2 o'clock in the morning.
Pero nos menciona incluso teniendo una carta de nosotros, los diferentes eventos que nosotros realizamos como son.
But they don't mention the different events that they have, like...
Noche de comedia.
Like they have different types of, you know, evenings, like a comedy night or movies and...
Ice cream movie night.
Ice cream movie night.
For kids.
For little kids and families.
Algunas empresas rentan el local.
Some company have rented the place to have their own Christmas party or whatever, you know.
La semana pasada, un daycare celebró una fiesta nosotros, en el patio nosotros.
Last week, daycare used their business place to celebrate a party for the daycare and their families.
Y para todos estos eventos es crucial el uso de equipo de sonido en el outdoor patio.
But for all these events, it's necessary to have the use of, you know, the sound in the outdoor patio.
Quiero señalar también que los últimos dos años...
I want to show you guys too, that in the last two years...
The point no solo se ha convertido en un lugar donde pueden acudir para obtener ice cream rolls.
The point has not only been a place where you can go in to get ice cream rolls.
Sino que se ha convertido en un lugar para personas de todas las edades.
But it's also become a place for people of different ages.
Que pueden acudir a disfrutar de estos eventos, diferentes eventos que mencioné anteriormente.
They can go there and enjoy all those different events that they provide.
Incluso la juventud de Salina disfruta mucho la...
Especially the younger people in Salina too enjoy the area.
Lo que nos lleva a preguntarnos cómo vemos a Salina entre unos años especiales en el downtown.
What he wants to know is how do you guys see Salina in the future, in the downtown area? What's going to be like?
Okay, estos eventos no solo son para el entretenimiento de nuestros clientes. No se han convertido en solo entretenimiento para nuestro cliente.
This event has not only been for the entertainment of our... This event has not only been for the entertainment of our customers...
sino que han jugado un papel importante en el desarrollo del downtown de Salina.
But it also plays an important part in the development of downtown Salina, the city.
Nosotros hemos hecho todo lo posible para que nuestros eventos sean amigables para familias.
We have done everything possible to make sure that the events are...
Amigables para las familias.
Friendly to family, you know, in general.
Y que impacten de manera positiva en el vecindario.
And that they impact in a positive form in the community.
Sin embargo, a raíz del tiempo que ya vamos operando...
However, since we started working there...
Nos dimos cuenta de la necesidad de que, como dije anteriormente, es crucial el uso de equipo de sonido para el éxito de las actividades desarrolladas.
But since I've been working there, they have noticed that it's necessary to have this, you know, the music and for the different activities that they have there for the people of Salina that attend.
Entendemos también que...
We also understand...
Que el uso de equipo de sonido al aire libre siempre va a existir cierta preocupación.
That the use of amplified sound and the, you know, open air is gonna bring some issues...
Preocupación para la ciudad.
For the city, you know, like for the neighborhood of the city.
Pero queremos comprometernos...
But we want to make sure...
Que tanto el staff como mi persona vamos a seguir las regulaciones.
You know, my staff and myself, we're gonna follow the regulations.
Y trabajaremos de cerca con la comunidad...
And we're gonna be working close with the community.
Para minimizar el máximo posible el impacto que pueda tener esto en los vecinos.
To minimize, you know, the most possible way, the impact that this can cause to the neighborhood and the city.
Hemos conversado con nuestros vecinos.
We have talked to our neighbors.
Y con muchos de nuestros clientes.
And with a lot of our clients.
Y han demostrado un tremendo apoyo para lo que hacemos en the point.
And they have shown us that they really appreciate what they're doing in their business.
Siendo consciente del impacto positivo que ha tenido esto en la comunidad de Salina y en la juventud de Salina.
And he said he feels that it's been positive for the community and the young people what the point has brought to them.
Y por estas razones...
And for this reason...
Solicito que tomen en cuenta este apoyo que nos ha dado la comunidad.
I hope that you guys take into account what the community has given them.
Y el apoyo que nos da la comunidad y el impacto que ha tenido the point in the downtown de Salina al momento de tomar su decisión.
That you take into account what the committee has brought to him, to the city of Salina, and that you take it into account what he has done for the city of Salina and how people are, you know, have liked the area and they like to go there.
¿Tienen alguna pregunta?
If you guys have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Does the commission have any questions of the applicant?
I guess I have one. The 10:00 PM or 2:00 AM, how significant of a difference is that for you?
En tal caso, solo impactaría en uno de los eventos que realizamos.
Como...
Que la fiesta.
It only will impact us in one of the events that we operate.
Y también corrijo, este, por ejemplo, la ice cream movie night...
Yeah, the ice cream movie night, for instance.
Siempre empiezan en verano, a partir de las 9 de la noche porque necesitamos la oscuridad para proyectar.
It usually starts at 10:00 PM because they need it to be darker to be able to, you know, show the movies.
Ni ninguna película va a terminar antes de las 10 de la noche.
And, you know, none of those movies will finish before 10 o'clock because depending on how soon it gets dark to start showing the movies.
Nosotros podemos comprometernos a bajar el volumen.
We can, you know, try, we can, you know, promise that we will turn the volume down...
De manera que no afecte a los vecinos.
In a way that it won't affect the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions of the applicant?
Is there not a way for this amplified sound to be inside the building?
Es una opción que tenemos en caso de que no aprueben el permiso.
It's an option that they have in case that they don't approve.
Pero implicaría mucho gasto.
But it will cause a lot of expenses in his part.
Y disminuiría la capacidad de recibir más clientes.
And it will also lower the amount of people that will be able to attend.
Is the 5:00 PM start time too late in the evening? I know that there's earlier activities that you can do outside.
Que si, las 5 de la tarde es muy temprano, muy tarde para ti empezar.
¿Tarde o temprano?
Tarde, para empezar. O sea, puedes empezar a las 5 de la tarde o tiene que ser más temprano?
Full transparency, the staff, my wife was the daycare provider that used the point for that, so...
Que si es muy tarde para empezar a las 5 de la tarde.
Pero es que, por ejemplo, algunos eventos necesariamente tienen que comenzar en la tarde. Y el hecho de que comencemos después de las 5 de la tarde...
Okay, pero, okay, some of the events, you know, might start earlier, so...
Y el hecho de que empecemos a las 5 de la tarde es porque hay menos, es fuera del horario laboral de los vecinos.
Yeah, the reason that I understand that we'll start at 5:00 PM is because it's after people have done, you know, with our working hours.
I think staff would need to clarify that we're not talking about events. We're not talking about all events starting after 5:00 PM. What we're talking about, we're not talking about watching movies with your family. We're talking about large speakers and amplifiers that are used to provide music for dances that produce quite a bit of volume and quite a bit of bass. And that is what people are commenting to us on. They're not talking about events, they're not talking about showing movies, they're not talking, they're talking about the very large speakers, very large amplifiers that a portable DJ provider is bringing in for specific dance events. And that's the only thing that we're talking about. Having movies on your patio is not amplified sound, but having speakers and amplifiers and having a DJ, that is what we're talking about. So, when we're talking about hours of operation, we're talking about amplified sound coming from speakers and amplifiers, not events on the patio, not showing movies on the patio. We're talking about the amplified sound.
Para clarificar...
To clarify...
Tengo entendido que la reunión es para permitir el uso de equipos.
That the meeting is to allow them to have the use of the amplified sound.
Y nosotros usamos equipos amplificados para todo este tipo de eventos.
And we use the sound, the amplified sound for all types of events.
Cuando mencioné todos los eventos que realizamos...
When I mentioned all the events that we, you know, but trust me...
Es porque quiero que la comisión tenga claro que no son solo fiestas en las que usamos esos equipos.
Because I want you guys to understand that it's not only for parties that we use that equipment, we use it for all the events.
One more question. So, now, you serve ice cream and what else? Do you serve alcohol?
Yeah, we serve ice cream, alcohol, we have a son appetizer, like fries, nachos, chips and salsa.
So, at what point does a speaker turn into, is it the amplifier? I know we've done this before, but for my, I can't understand...
When it rattles the windows of nearby buildings, then it's considered to be amplified sound with speakers that are providing a sound level that far exceeds the boundaries of the property.
And also, did you say in the beginning, this is one of a kind, we don't have a precedence of this?
Well, the VOU had a request for this. It was denied. The, what is today's speakeasies and then was J.C. Bars and Grills had a request for it. It was denied. Shoeless Joes, that nobody remembers, they had an outdoor patio, requested amplified sound, and it was denied. And as recently as, maybe it was 2023, the Library Bar and Grill on South Santa Fe requested a conditional use permit for outdoor amplified sound, and it was denied. And the one at the library was denied based on complaints from neighbors, and that's in very close proximity to residential homes. And so, amplified sound is when you have sound that is music or other means of producing sound that comes through speakers and amplifiers that is audible well beyond the limits of the property. And if you were showing a movie on a screen into the patio, usually you don't need six-foot tall speakers and amplifiers to hear the sound from that. But city staff has seen the equipment that's brought in for the dances, and we consider it to be sound amplification.
How long have you owned this business?
Two years.
Two years? And you've been operating this way the whole time?
Almost a year and a half.
Year and a half? And you've been using, how long have you been using the amplified sound?
All the time, sir.
Okay.
All right, any other questions of the applicant?
I'm sorry to...
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not trying to dominate here, but a question. So, what happens, I don't know how this is gonna go, but what happens if we approve you as a drinking establishment but deny the amplified sound? What does that do?
Tendríamos que cerrar nuestras puertas.
We'll probably have to close our doors, the business.
And I have a question to build on that. Basically, you are a drinking establishment or defined as that right now, or a bar. And, but I went on your Facebook page and your marketing, that type of thing, and you market towards family-friendly, children, parties, that type of thing. You're essentially changing your business model. Will that work out being a bar and marketing for family-friendly events?
Que si eso va a servir, tener tu negocio como de familia o un bar, como...
Nosotros nos gustaría, nosotros siempre, okay. Nosotros siempre hemos tenido la idea de aceptar todas las edades y hacer eventos para todas las edades.
We always had the idea of having, you know, different events for different ages groups.
Así es, sigue nuestro concepto.
Are you operating mainly in the spring, summer and fall? Do you operate in the winter at all?
On winter time, we operate just indoor because we don't receive any, too much customer on that time.
All right, any other questions of the applicant?
Not at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And before I open it up to the public, is there any other questions, the staff?
So, we've turned down basically all of these amplified sound requests in the past?
The ones that have come before this body have not been approved, but usually there are a lot more people there complaining. And this, this of all, although there's apartments nearby and lofts nearby, the majority of those either had motivated neighbors or they had lots of neighbors who were in opposition to them and who came to the hearing to complain. And so, this ordinance that we have for outdoor amplified sound is to try to have people notified ahead of time so the business doesn't just start operating and then getting complaints. And so, there's two approaches that businesses take, and I would just beg to differ that the point has not changed or not tried to change their business model. Even their own letter that they submitted indicated that as their business grew, they had the opportunity to expand their services, including hosting parties and their patio. And they've continually had to adapt to meet their customers' needs. Their business model, from what they initially started with, has changed, and that's part of the reason we're here. But there's different approaches you can take. This planning commission limited the use of the patio, the extended outdoor patio that's on their property for Big Nose Cates, and they limited the use till 12:00 PM. And then, the attorney for the owner asked, how can we go about being able to extend the use of that till 2:00 AM since we're open to 2:00 AM? And I said, you can ask. And so, they filed an application, and they came before the planning commission, and they asked the planning commission, could we extend our hours from midnight to 2:00 AM? And the city planning commission said, yes, we think that should be approved. And we notified the owner of Big Nose Cates that they could, from that point on, be using their patio till 2:00 AM. This was not a case where a business came and said, we'd like to add outdoor amplified sound, and so, we're gonna file that, how do we get that approved? We're gonna file this application. They just changed their business model and started using outdoor amplified sound. So, that's why this is a different approach than asking if they could change their business model. We're here as just a reaction to changes they've already made.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to provide any comments? And if you could state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Eva Martinez, 624 West Elm. I am an employee at the point. I have seen different age groups coming in and out. I started earlier this spring, and they had mentioned to me, you know, the different kind of stuff that they wanted to start doing and things like that, and it seemed very helpful to the community. I was one of the people that reached out to the community and went down Santa Fe asking for support for this petition. And a lot of, you know, people were in support and cahoots with, you know, as he said, the themed parties that we have and stuff like that. So, for me, also as a young adult, I, you know, I've gone to speakeasies, I've gone to Big Nose and places like that. There's not a set place for us to let loose and dance and stuff. So, going to the point, that outdoor patio area that they have is really nice for the younger crowd as well, just because there's, you know, there is that ample space to have fun and stuff like that. And then, again, the movie nights and stuff for the kiddos, that's always been a good turnout. So, I believe it's a really nice vital place to, you know, come and relax. And then, like he said, just the downtown element of it all kind of makes it more nightlife as well.
Okay, thank you.
And staff would note, just so you guys are aware, in the packet we provided at your seats, and we provided the applicant with one as well, but they provided us yesterday with a letter that I'm assuming they had provided to business owners downtown. And on the back page, they have six signatures, and they list the profession occupation. So, you can see there were four business owners in downtown, and then two other people who signed in support of the letter that is, was attached and provided at your seats.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments from the audience here today? Okay, Dustin, do you have anyone online? Okay, Dustin, do you have anyone online?
We do have somebody online. I'm not sure if they would like to speak or not.
Yes, ma'am, I would. I'm Charles Alt-Dill, property owner. The business operates, or my business anyway, operates from 207 West Ash Street. The registered ownership for the business that owns the building, it's 53 Wildcat Circles, so both of those here in town. I want to let the commission know I'm completely in support of the modification to the use permit that Diego is requesting. I want to make sure that the commissions, the commission members, if some of you weren't on the commission at the time the original use permit was granted, I just want to point out a couple of things that you've heard about, talked about today. And I also want to kind of draw your attention to how The Point fits in with some of the other businesses that it's been compared to. I just was jotting notes, so these aren't in a particular kind of order. But the question came up about the outdoor stanchions and the protection of the permanent barriers. The reason that those outdoor stanchions are used is because during the first conversation, the original hearing for the first use permit, those were discussed. Some of the other alternatives suggested were concrete road barriers or asking, requiring us to do curb work to remove the driveway pull-throughs. It was pointed out that the city at that time, and I think still today, was simply using traffic cones to mark off the parking lot around the city stage and continuing to operate that parking lot as a public parking lot while events were occurring that were marked off with those cones. It was pointed out that the city was essentially requesting that the property operate at a higher level than the city was requiring for itself in terms of blocking off traffic access. The result was that the stanchions were just fine. So that's part of the reason why permanent barriers weren't required during the original use permit application process. As far as whether the business is classified as a restaurant or a drinking establishment, that conversation, again, happened during the first use permit hearing. The reason that it's classified as a restaurant and not a drinking establishment is because city staff at the time recommended that the commission prove the use permit as a restaurant permit because it was a mixed-sales-type business model. And that's the reason why receipts are turned in and evaluated. I'm not sure that it really makes a difference, and I don't know that it made a difference at the time, other than city staff wanted to maintain more control and more perspective, more ability to monitor the operation of the business. Essentially, they wanted more oversight. That's the reason why, at least the articulated reason why at that hearing, why that was done. I don't know that it makes a big difference which one you do. I will say that I've seen, as a neighbor, I use this building to run our law firm. And I consistently see family-oriented events in Diego's space. They start four o'clock sometimes, 3:30, when kids get out of whatever the activities are that they're doing in school or daycare or whatever. And that they're, very much are family-friendly and family-oriented events that take place in that space. In addition to some of the outdoor parties, birthday parties, I think one might have been a promotion party, like a work promotion party that he was hosting for some of. Those sorts of events that take place separate from the family events and at a different time, usually I think different days. But both of those things actually do occur in that space. And the ice cream sales are part of what they do during those events. And I'll tell you that from personal experience. I've been there, I've bought ice cream, followed the people there during those events. So that's very much a part of their business model. And that, I don't see anything that they're asking for as any kind of real change in their business model. I completely agree with Diego when he says that he's trying to do the same thing he's been doing the whole time. I think Mr. Andrews' perspective on that is based on, I don't know what I've seen down there in that business. I don't know if he's bought ice cream there before, but I've not seen him there. So I don't know if he has any personal experience with how the business actually operates. As far as parking goes, there are publicly accessible parking lots to the north of the property in the city's parking lot that are available after hours. It's unrestricted parking. There's on-street parking on all four sides of the block around the business. And blocks to the northeast and west all have unrestricted public parking on-street. The lots to the east of the property are unrestricted public parking. There's a lot to the south between our building essentially and the city, the teen center on the west side of the street. And then there's also a public parking lot behind Big Nose Cates on the west side of the street down Seventh Street. So there's tons of public parking available, whether there's 50 people present or 200. As far as the bathrooms and exits, the occupancy issues, I don't understand those issues to currently be before the commission today. I understand that that's in the air, it's been discussed. But as I understand, the use permit application at this point in time deals with can we use outdoor amplified sound or not? Again, I'm supportive of that request. And frankly, if the commission has any kind of questions or concerns about the occupancy issues, the door swing, crash bars, the need for a second bathroom, those are all issues that can fairly easily be addressed. And as the property owner, I'm certainly committed to working with Diego to make sure that he can run his business in a way that complies with whatever requirements the commission imposes. That brings me to the context here. As I'm looking at the downtown drinking establishments map that city staff provided, and I think the commissioners might want to just kind of follow along with me on that. As I understand it, the Vu and the Paramount Bar are both right across the street from some residential apartments, the Lee District or Lee Building Apartments in there. The Groove, Big Nose Cates, Blue Sky Brewery &amp; Eats, Candilase, those are all, again, right across the street from any loft apartments that are on Santa Fe. Barolo and Jose Peppers, which is Prickly Pear, same thing. Those are either underneath loft apartments or across the street from loft apartments. And then behind each of those, on those blocks, I think, I think all of the ones I just mentioned are within 500 feet of residential housing to the east and also to the west. If you were to draw, if you were to draw the radius, I think you'd hit some houses on those. The Cellar, I'm not sure if there's residential loft apartments there. I think there might be across the street there. I'm not sure that Martinelli's is really a comparable entity because it's a restaurant and it doesn't operate after hours, as far as I know. Old Chicago has an outdoor patio with TVs and speakers and amplified sound. I fail to see the difference between what Old Chicago does with its roll-up window behind the bar and with its outdoor TVs and speakers. I don't see the difference between that and serving ice cream to kids on a movie night because Old Chicago's up in light, too. And then Yaya's. Yaya's has a covered patio with event space back behind it. It has, it's not sidewalk event space. But again, there's certainly the opportunity to use that space. And I think they have used that space for concerts and that sort of thing. And again, if you draw, if you draw a 500-yard, or 500-foot, rather, radius around Yaya's, you're going to hit a lot of houses. So that's the, that's the context here. The point is a little bit further removed than most of these other places I've mentioned from any kind of significant residential housing other than the Gold Key Apartments and the one, I forget the name, just to the, to the south of the Gold Key Apartments. Not that those folks aren't significant, but it's just, that's the, that's the context. It's really not that different from what most of the other comparable businesses are doing. The focus of the city's attention has been the fact that they're occasionally, the point is having a DJ host dance parties on Fridays and Saturdays, or I think mainly just Saturdays, not so much Fridays. Which, I suppose, I understand the concern about occupancy. I understand the concern about having a drinking establishment run a nightclub that's outdoors. I think all of those things can be reasonably managed through reasonable conditions on a use permit. But the fact of the matter is, nobody else in town is doing that. And it adds something that downtown wouldn't have otherwise, other than Prickly Pear. Prickly Pear uses, or at least used to use, I'm not sure what the plans are for Jose Peppers, but the Prickly Pear used part of the plaza that the city built to the south there with a stage for the Prickly Pear to serve their food and drinks. And that was a specific part of their business model. So again, I feel like there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of ambiguity in the city's position here as far as what we're being compared to, the point is being compared to, and the standards that are being imposed. Because there are lots of other folks downtown doing this. It just so happens that The Point is directly across the street from Dean Andrews' office. And so it's a little more visible than some of these others.
Okay, Mr. Alt-Dill, we'll conclude your comments now, if that's okay, so we can move along. But thank you very much.
That's good.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions of the applicant or staff before we bring it back to us for discussion? Okay, I will open it up to the commission for a discussion or a motion.
I wanted to bring up a few things.
Okay.
And I've been jotting down notes as we've been talking about this. And the last commenter that was there brought up some good points, you know? It's not happening anywhere else. And that is true because we have not allowed amplified sound for any of these other bars that are out there. And there's a purpose for that. And I personally feel if we open up amplified sound here at this location, we are then setting a precedent. And we're going to have other business owners that are going to come back and say, "We would like amplified sound till 2:00 a.m. as we allowed for the other bars." I did appreciate the statement that he made about Martinelli's, that this is not comparable because Martinelli's is a restaurant. And that kind of opened my eyes to some other comments that were made earlier. Again, this is not about movie night, as it was mentioned. It's not about kids' ice cream parties. This is more about live music and a DJ out on the patio, which is affecting or can affect residents around that area. I, again, I went on the social media sites, I looked. There was a, even just recently, there was a video that was posted referencing The Point, tagging The Point. I don't remember if it was Cash Hollister or somewhere, somebody, one of the R&B groups. And it said, "Just south of 200 people at The Point." And he showed the DJ booth and the flashing lights and everything that was going there. I cannot verify social media. You know, everything we see on the internet is true, right? But that was a post, and it showed what was going on there. Obviously, when we are opening up to a DJ, to live music, to events that are going on out on the patio, we are going to have more customers, more clientele that are going to come in there. And again, that is going to exacerbate the issue with the occupancy. I, for one, am not in favor of allowing the amplified sound out on the patio. And I believe the findings speak for themselves as are listed there in the denial. We don't want to set a precedent. We don't want to negatively impact the residents that are around there. And as was put in place, when this permit was handed out to The Point, there is to be no amplified music on that outside patio. And that has been disregarded, and it has been happening, as we heard a moment ago already. And I, for one, am not in favor of it. I know there's the question of 10:00 p.m. and 2:00 a.m. There is no way I could go along with this for 2:00 a.m. But I personally would just say that I am not in favor of the amplified sound at this point.
Okay. The drinking establishment part of that, Chad?
I mean, it is a drinking establishment. You know, that's, I think it's, that's the basis of it.
Okay.
I don't know how that's going to affect the business model in any way. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that's going to affect it in any way.
The primary distinction is to maintain the status as a restaurant. They would have to furnish me monthly their receipts to confirm what percentage of their receipts are food sales. And they're not interested in doing that, and I'm not interested in reading them.
Right.
I would just allow them to have the freedom to operate how they want to operate in terms of serving alcoholic beverages and not get into that part. The only reason we are here is because of the Saturday night dance parties with outdoor DJs and amplified sound that extended to 2:00 a.m., which none of the other establishments downtown are doing. And that doesn't mean that this establishment can't do it. It just requires approval from the planning commission to do it.
Any other comments from commissioners, or do I hear a motion?
I'll just say that I don't personally have a problem with the 5 to 10 as far as the amplified sound goes. I think that businesses with outdoor patios that are, that will be comparable, I understand it will set a precedent. But I think shutting it off at 10 is a reasonable time. As far as the drinking park establishment goes, I don't have an issue with that either. That prob- They, I mean, once they, if they ever break the maximum people allowance, would, that would, the city would have the option to pull that? Or is that only for the K-? Sorry.
No, that would be something, we would bring it back. We would not do it administratively. Only the planning commission can revoke a conditional use permit because you're the ones that granted it. So the, I guess the best way to organize this is, is action item one is, does the planning commission view this as a drinking establishment that should be free to operate and serve the alcoholic beverages they serve free of interference by the city or monitoring by the city? If that's the case, then this commission could approve the Point's conditional use permit for being a drinking establishment. And that would be the first item of business. And we have five conditions that are outlined on page 13. That approval of the conditional use permit is for a drinking establishment patio with no minimum food sales requirement. Development and use of the licensed premises shall substantially correspond to the approved floor plan and seating plan, which we have. Any further modifications would come back before this body. We would continue to work with them to provide suitable safety barriers to the driveway approaches. And they agree that they'll clean up the public spaces around their premises. So action item one is to see if there's a motion. And a second to support their having a conditional use permit to operate a drinking establishment and have no minimum food sales requirement and no monitoring.
Okay, the commissioner-
One question, sorry.
Go ahead.
If we, I haven't loaded on that yet. Item number four, is that just the curb cut part? Or is that- Item number four, is that just the curb cut part, or is that the barrier that the chain and the-
Well, we started out, we had posts that were put out in the driveway approaches that said, "Do not enter," and so they were identifiable for people driving down the street because historically that had been an access point either for the dry cleaners or for Soggy Dogg that had a dog groomer business there, and everybody pulled under the canopy to pick up and drop off their pets. It seems to us that it's been there long enough, people know it's there, they know the place is there, so if you think that the stanchions and the cable they have around there is sufficient to identify that as a barrier, it admittedly won't stop a vehicle, but that's, and we haven't had any incidents or anything there. But condition number four, if you believe that the stanchions that you saw in the photograph there are sufficient to let people know that that seating area is there, then that would satisfy condition four.
Okay. I don't think the stanchions are suitable for that, mainly as a safety concern, not just when we, if it's open as a permanent drinking establishment. They clearly have been moving the stanchions to the maximum distance on a few occasions, not holding that same area that was allowed. Also, if it is going to be more for kids being inside that area, too, for parties, as I saw this weekend, there were kids going under the stanchions, possibly into the street. Just more of a safety concern, something that isn't easily movable, that would be more full length to the ground or something for safety concerns.
You think something more like what Martinelli's or Blue Sky has, has railings and things like that, as opposed to that?
Yes.
Okay. So under condition number four, we could just clarify that, that the commission or majority of commissioners think that a suitable safety barrier would be something with a rail that would not be easily gone through like the stanchion cables that we have now. So that could be clarified in condition four.
I don't know if you guys agree with that or not.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion from the commission for this part of the application?
I would move that we approve action item one to allow the point to be considered a drinking establishment with the five staff recommendation items noted, although number four would need to have the rail barrier instead of-
I guess there's a sixth that-
Other six.
Oh, no, that's anything else that they want to add, so it's not, it's five, unless you want to add something else, and I think Commissioner Rogers clarified under point four, and we've taken a note on that.
Okay.
I would second that with the five.
Okay. Got it.
Lost the word, whatever the word.
That's okay.
Conditions.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the first part of application, CU 22-8A, with the five conditions with number four being modified. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, let's move on to the second part of the application, which is the amplified sound.
So action item two, and I will just perhaps a point that was made and is correct. If the city is sponsoring or allowing bands or DJs with amplified sound on the Campbell Plaza stage, that is allowed, but it's allowed till 10:00 p.m. And the same would go through the City Lights stage, and so when we looked at this before, it seemed a little unfair to say, "Well, the City Lights stage is right across the street, and they can have amplified sound, but they're cutting off at 10:00 p.m." And so, again, the difference here is primarily just the lateness of that hour when it's occurring. So under option, action item for amplified sound, under option one, allowing it till 10:00 p.m. would be consistent with Campbell Plaza or the City Lights stage. Allowing it till 2:00 a.m. would not, would be different than what is going on at Campbell Plaza or City Lights stage, but it's within your discretion to do that, and based on whatever decision you make and the events they have, then that will be an independent working with the tenant and the business, the building owner, to address the restrooms, the occupancy, that type of thing. But in order to do that, we just need guidance from this commission on, is adding outdoor amplified sound okay in this location, and if so, what is the duration that the commission feels comfortable with?
Okay. Is there any discussion or a motion from the commission?
I personally am not ready to set that precedent, so I would vote for denial, or make a motion for denial of CU 22-8A altogether, with the, on the amplified sound option.
And that would be, your motion would be based on the findings that-
Based on the findings-
That staff has provided.
Staff has provided.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is moved and seconded to deny application CU 22-8A with the conditions that the staff has outlined in the packet. How do I say this? All those in favor of denial, say yes?
Yes.
Yes? All those opposed, say no?
No.
No.
Okay. The motion carried to deny it.
So could we have a show of hands just to help Daisy? So we had the motion from Farber and a second from Paget to deny the application. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, that is three, and all those opposed to the motion, please raise your right hand. So that motion carries by a vote of three to two.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners and staff and applicant for that. Dean, is there any other upcoming meeting matters or administrative volumes?
We have no, we have no turnover on the commission. We do have a new youth member. Mr. Seidel got his term extended, but we are going to have our annual business meeting and election of officers on the day after Labor Day, the third of September. And so if any of you are extending your Labor Day weekend, just please let us know, but it's significant from the standpoint that Chair Mike Sell has served two terms as chair, and so he's not eligible to be reelected as chair, and Carla Waters has served two terms as vice chair, and she's not eligible to be reelected to vice chair. So we'll be voting on new officers, and then we'll have an orientation and training as part of a steady session, but we will meet on the third, and then we will meet on the 17th. And I'm not sure if you are familiar with the plan to convert the former Safelite Auto Glass building at Mulberry and Santa Fe into a restaurant, but that property has been incorporated into the C4 Business District and Mette's, which is to have an outdoor patio for serving food and beverages. So they have filed a conditional use permit application to add an outdoor serving area, and that will be on your agenda the 19th.
All right. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is been moved a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.